Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. We're starting a couple of minutes late, but we'll make up for it as we get in the homestretch, trust me. The second item on the agenda is a moment of prayer. And you might have noticed that each of the commissioners was given the opportunity to compose their own prayer and speak at that, at this time. It was up to me, so the buck stopped here for this evening. And I'm not very good at, I'm good at praying, I do that a lot, but I don't compose very well. So I thought I would use a prayer that I'm very familiar with. And we will start. Join me if you wish. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those from trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Amen. Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. And we have a Marine with us. Krista Belcher, one of our employees, who will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Krista.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Krista. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample is absent. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. This evening, we have a couple of employee recommendations. I'd like to introduce Tony. Is it Seoka? Seiya? Kosia. Tony, would you come up here, please? And Ariel Lund. Please come up here. Both of these people are from our Veterans Department, and they've been recognized for outstanding achievement. And since we have two other veterans on the board here, I ask them to make these presentations for, on behalf of the board. Gentlemen.
Okay, my name was first on the list, so Tony Kosia. We're very proud to give you the employee recognition for this month. And he was today's internal nomination winner. Tony has been with the county for five and a half years, for a little over four years at LETS as a driver, then moving to Veteran Services in the same capacity in 2022. This is the task of the Veteran Service Driver to provide safe, efficient, customer-friendly transportation via bus, van, or county vehicle to veterans in need of the service, including those requiring additional assistance or with special needs. Those are the assigned tasks. It is clear that Tony does much more. This is Tony's winning nomination. It was sent by a coworker of Tony's who witnessed these actions and decided that they were worthy of recognition. And when I was talking to Tony earlier, she spilled the beans that she was the one that recommended him, so. So if you wonder who the coworker was, it is no longer a secret. By your self-admission. This is what she wrote. He stayed past his shift to assist a veteran in moving out of his apartment as he faced eviction and took him to a local hotel for emergency shelter. The following morning, he went back to take the same veteran to get groceries at Myers. And I'm sure there's more of a story than that, but that's all we have, but congratulations, Tony.
Thank you. I have the pleasure to give the award to Ariel Lund, who I've known a lot over the last couple of years. But first, I'd like to read a letter from their boss, who is also a dad. And he's out coaching soccer right now, but he said, "Thank you for recognizing excellence throughout Livingston County departments. It is an important recognition for our employees and extremely motivating for all to see. Regrettably, I cannot attend in person because I coach my daughter's soccer team on Mondays at 6:00 PM. However, I would like to comment on two outstanding employees. The work ethic and commitment to our customers at Ariel Lund and Tony Kosia. Kosia, I always say Tony, apologizing. Have displayed his first class. They set the examples for others to follow. I'm extremely proud of them and thankful to work alongside them. They are, they are where the rubber meets the road, and I know our customers are grateful to them. Congratulations, Ariel and Tony." And that's from Ramon Baca. He is our Director of Livingston County Veteran Services. Lot of reading, so I'm gonna go on here. So about today's external nomination winner, Ms. Ariel Lund. Ariel is a relative newbie to Livingston County. She will celebrate her one-year anniversary next month. Thank you, yeah. Her position is a Veterans Benefits Counselor's Two. This means that she assists veterans, their dependents, and survivors with preparing claims for services and programs offered by the state and federal and local entities. They help explain benefits, manage cases throughout claims process, conduct home visits if needed, work with medical personnel courts, the Veteran Relief Fund, and other agencies required to obtain services due to the veterans. Thank you. This sounds impressive on paper, but sounds even better in real life, because we are veterans and we take care of those services as well. This is about Ariel's nomination. Ariel was not nominated just one time this quarter, not two times, but actually three times in one quarter. Nomination number one. The first nomination was sent in by a veteran that Ariel assisted, said, "Ariel Lund has saved my life. I've had significant struggles." Comes a veteran's a little choked up. Recently culminated into me becoming homeless and losing my ability to work. I went to the hospital and they learned I was homeless. Their social worker knew Ariel and reached out. After a few days in the hospital, I was discharged and met immediately by Ariel. Thank you. I'm someone who's never used government assistance, and she's been fantastic. Accepting help has been a challenge. Ariel has made me comfortable accepting help. She's always available. She follows through with everything in a timely manner. She even thinks of the things that need to be done, so nothing gets missed. I look forward to finding out what medical issues need to be addressed soon and hopefully get back working sooner than later. My journey has just begun, but at least I know I have a dedicated partner with Ariel. And then I'm gonna go on to nomination number two. Do a lot of work with veterans too, so I get pretty choked up. The second nomination was sent in by another veteran that Ariel worked with. Says Ariel is so positive and accurate with helping me, it lowered my stress level. Need to do that for me too. Okay. I was upset at what I thought was my failure to not know all the answers. She quickly smoothed everything out for me. And then nomination number three. The last nomination was sent in by the daughter of a veteran, one of the family members she helped. Ariel has been priceless partner and advocate for our family. Her kindness, empathy, and understanding has impacted far beyond the financial help we received. She represents the change humanity needs in this good world.
Would you two like to come back here and get your picture taken? You never know.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Put your back where we found it. Okay. Next is correspondence, item number seven. We have a correspondence from Elkhona County, a resolution in support of the revised school code. Also, something from Antonagon County, a resolution affirming support for all constitutional rights, including but not limited to the right for the people to bear arms and to adequately fund mental health services. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move, Gross. Place on file. Second.
All right, so it's been moved and supported to accept these correspondence and keep, and put them on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item on the agenda is called to the public. Madam Clerk?
First is Steve Willsmore from Marion Township, followed by Stanley Brish.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Willsmore. Husband, father, veteran, small business owner, lifetime Livingston County resident. I wanted to get up here and congratulate you guys and say we appreciate it. We really appreciate everything you guys do for this county and that very strong resolution to uphold all proponents of our constitution. Thank you for that. So if we are to be a true constitutional county, which I now believe that we are, there's a few things I would like to discuss. I know you don't answer questions. I just have a few quick points I would like to mention. In a true constitutional county, one thing that is abhorrent to the Constitution, and I'm sure you will agree, is the practice of civil asset forfeiture. If you're not familiar with that, that's where a person's money and property is taken without due process before they are convicted of a crime, and often without ever even being charged with a crime. In 2022, civil asset forfeiture exceeded $5 billion, and that is abhorrent to the Constitution, the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments, and I would just like to have that noted. Second quick item I would like to mention is the turning over of pistol sales records to our Sheriff's Department to be forwarded to the state police. No provision, no right guarantee to us, and the Bill of Rights requires paperwork, a permission slip, or a registration. So if we are to be a true constitutional county, that is something I would like considered and talked about in the future. The third quick item up, this definitely relates to the Constitution, but the overall health, well-being, and trust of our county. It's recently come to my attention that the state of Michigan now has almost 400 sworn law enforcement officers that are on the Brady List, which you can find at michigan.gov. If you're not familiar with the Brady List, those are sworn law enforcement officers who can now no longer testify in court because their credibility is ruined, because they've been convicted of perjury, of theft, of evidence destruction, evidence manufacture, or crimes up to and including domestic abuse. And I would like to ask the county to look at the names on that list and ensure that no such sworn enforcement officers are employed in this county. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Stanley Brish, Brighton, followed by Nick Brish.
Good evening. I'm Stanley Brish, a resident of Livingston County since 1990, business owner in the community since 1998, father of three Albrighton High School students, coach in the community since 2003, currently Brighton High School freshman football for the last 15 years. Also was on the Livingston County Economic Development Council for eight years, two as the chairman, two as pre-chair, post-chairman, and then post-chair. I'm here tonight because of an issue that you guys are reconsidering, and that is the ARPA grant funds for Reaching Higher. I have been a part of that program since 2010. And I've been a mentor, a teacher, and a volunteer speaker in all of the Livingston County schools, along with Schwartz Creek, University of Detroit Mercy, and several other schools as well. So we're here, I'm here today to plead to you guys that as you reconsider whether this program will receive funding, I'm here as a dad, a coach, a father, and, and as a responsible citizen that we have a responsibility to prepare our young people for what we are going to hand them. Look at our heads, guys. We're gray-haired. We're turning this over sooner than later. I got maybe 15 summers left if I outlive every Brish man in my family. So that being said, we gotta get them ready. And what is Reaching Higher? There was some consideration as to what we are and what we're pushing and teaching. I am a construction guy. I've built more buildings in Livingston County than any other contractor. So I've been around here a long time. We can't find people to work. Reaching Higher, what it's not, it's not political, and it's not religious. It is a leadership program, preparing our kids for all the things that they're not getting anywhere else. We talk, we teach public speaking, goal-setting, fear, negative beliefs, positive life choices, stress. It is an intense eight weeks. And we need your help. Over 400 students in a year would lose an opportunity to gain the power and strength and voice that some of us are lucky enough to have that they don't. One example, one young man, and I'll tell you the story exactly how it happened. When I met him as a mentor, his hat looked like this. His hood was on, angry, very, very upset, came into the class. I didn't know what to do. I wasn't sure what I was dealing with. Was we, were we gonna teach this young man, or were we going to roll in the dirt? I wasn't sure. I've taught at Innovation Academy right here in Howell, and I love it, absolutely love it. This young man's grade point average was so low, he couldn't qualify for free lunch. It was bad. And I looked at him and I said, "Son, I don't know if you're gonna make it in eight weeks. I don't know. If you do, here's all I hope. Someday, when I'm sitting on a bar stool, drinking a beer and a fight breaks out, I just hope you got my back." That's all I wanted. That's what I wanted. And this young man, after Reaching Higher, after Reaching Higher, he was accepted to the University of Michigan's Engineering Program. It took him two years to get there, but he got there, and he credits us. We need you, and we need you to think clearly, ask the questions that you need to make a positive answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nick Brish, Brighton Township, followed by Jane Telking.
Well, you guys might be done with hearing from the Brishes, but you only got one more. So my name's Nick Brish. I've lived in Brighton my whole life, graduate of Brighton High School, two-time Livingston County Athlete of the Year, went on to play football at my own union where I was lucky enough to win two national championships. Was a part of Reaching Higher in high school, not as a student, but as a friend to people that were in the class, seeing what it could do. Recently, I took it as an adult. And since then, that convinced me to get out of the comfortable, which was working for somebody for 40 hours a week, to taking the leap and starting my own company, Metcon LLC. Little bit of a chip off the block, also a construction company, Livingston County, hoped to be here my whole life. But what I preach as a young adult from Reaching Higher is that it teaches kids to be comfortable in the uncomfortable. And in an era right now, that I've got a group of friends and a group of kids underneath me, knowing that they probably couldn't get up here and talk in front of a group of people like yourselves, I think there's no better time to support a class and a group of people and a group of mentors like the one sitting behind me like right now with the ARPA funds. It would be an injustice to the communities around the whole county to not continue this program and to give them funding that they needed. So I really hope that you guys take that into account from a young adult, new business owner, and somebody that is just trying to make it along each day, that this is what this class can do. It gives you the confidence to go out and attack something that you not necessarily are prepared for or confident enough to do, but thriving in the uncomfortable is what it taught me to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jane Telking, Genoa Township, followed by Ben Tasic.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jane Telking, and I have lived in Livingston County for 25 years, first in downtown Howell, and now I live in Genoa Township. And I'm here with the Reaching Higher Group. I have been with Reaching Higher almost as long as Stan. I've been, I think, about 13 years, and I am now the Director of Fundraising and Development for Reaching Higher. So we were hoping to bring some students here from some classes, but my most recent class that I taught at Brighton High School, they're all busy with sports and jobs and extracurricular activities. So if you guys will indulge me, I wanted to read some letters. At the culmination of our eight-week program, we asked each one of the students to write a letter to Reaching Higher, kind of sharing their experience, what the eight weeks has meant for them. So I just wanted to read a few of those letters to you, and these are from students at Brighton High School. Dear Reaching Higher, it's hard to put into words exactly what this class has taught in the past couple of weeks. When I first came into class, I saw people I'm friends with, people I've only talked to a couple of times, and people I didn't know at all. That being said, this class has shown me how impactful seeing things from other people's perspectives can be. From facing my fears to becoming a more caring and supportive person to myself and others, Reaching Higher has given me so many tools to use as I go forward. Each week, listening to my peers talk about their own perspectives and stories has been moving in more ways than one, watching them talk about challenges and fears that they face. I have watched people that I have looked up to as leaders be their true, most authentic selves, and it has shown me that no matter how someone looks or acts on the outside, we all deal with our own internal battles. This class has also taught me what I believe is the most important lesson someone can be taught. We are all gifted with our own potential, no matter the struggles we are faced with. Everyone is capable of fulfilling goals and being the best version of themselves, no matter what others may say or what obstacles may be standing in their way. I see this potential in every single one of my higher peers. The lessons I've learned in this class have and will continue to guide me into the future and influence my future relationships, work ethics, and how I react to situations as a whole. I am so thankful that I was given the opportunity to participate in this class. At the time I started Reaching Higher this year, I was dealing with a lot of stress and sadness. It was during the time of school, I like to call the sad gray area, because it's right after football and track. So I have no stress outlet, and nothing was bringing me much joy or happiness, aside from lifting and video games. Also, without anything outside of school in my life, I felt very unmotivated and felt the same. And then Reaching Higher added a whole new dynamic to my life and brought me some sort of happiness, but that's not all it did for me. It provided me a way to deal with my stress. And both times I've done this, I've seen significant improvement in my stress management. My whole life, I have dealt with stress and anxiety, and to some extent, depression. I found temporary outlets, but those only brought temporary joy, and the happiness never stuck. I would stop doing these things. All the negative thoughts would come back by the time the next day would come around. But Reaching Higher has shown me that there is a light at the end of the tunnel and people struggling with the same self-hate, stress, anxiety, and other problems I am dealing with. So I would like to thank everyone who has helped me along the way, and a special thank you to those who have been my whole high school career in Reaching Higher. 15 seconds. Okay, I won't go on to this third letter, but I just.
I tell you, I want to hear the last one.
Okay, okay, thank you. Dear Reaching Higher, when I heard about this class, I was excited but unsure of what I would learn. Oftentimes, figures at school and in athletics preach the same ideals. I expected to hear the same messages about leadership that are impactful but repetitive. Despite this, on the first day of this class, I felt an energy that is like what none I have ever felt before. Hearing the excitement and the mentors' voices and passion that consumed them made me feel free to exist and let my guard down. Something I personally struggled with before Reaching Higher was opening up to others and sharing my personal emotions. I perceive this as a weakness, and if I shared too much, maybe I wouldn't live up to the expectations people had of me. In our class discussions, being forced to share personal experiences shifted my perspective. In seeing the power others held by sharing their stories, I came to realize the strength within experience and that personal value does not diminish through hardship, but it evolves us into stronger, wiser people. This correlates to what making Reaching Higher so special. In teaching leadership skills, they focused on the whole person, not just goals and physical achievement, but mental growth and holding a positive self-view. I have learned that in order to continue on the journey to becoming my best self, admire my strengths, acknowledge how to work through my weaknesses, surround myself with people that support me for who I am, and not stray away from situations that make me uncomfortable. Nothing great comes from stagnates. Stepping out of myself, pushing my limits, and taking the reins on my stress is what allows me to transform and reach levels I may never have believed were attainable. I am so grateful for this experience and hope all of my classmates and mentors know throughout this experience, each one of you have inspired me in ways I cannot thank you enough for. I cannot wait to witness all of the great things I know you will accomplish.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ben Tasic, Genoa Township, followed by Tim Quinn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ben Tasic. I live in Genoa Township, and I've lived here for the last 23 years. As far as I'm concerned, Livingston County is one of the greatest counties in the state of Michigan. And I say that after 23 wonderful years in this community. I'm here on behalf of Livingston County Transportation Department. And I wish Tony was here so he could, since he's a LETS bus driver, he could tell us why I'm here this evening. We're very fortunate to have LETS as a public transportation system in our county. However, we all know that LETS needs more buses, needs more drivers, needs to expand their service. I had an opportunity to arrange for a trip on Wednesday. A friend of mine that's in a nursing home, he's a disabled and with meager means, needs transportation to come to church on Wednesday evening. And LETS is able to arrange to bring him to church on Wednesday evening, but it cannot take him home because by the time the program is over, there are only a few bus drivers at that time of the evening. So we have to find other transportation for Eric. I would like to take him home, of course, but he's in a wheelchair, and I cannot get the wheelchair in my car. It's one of these battery-operated wheelchairs. We have a, the county has a five-year master plan that is, in my opinion, one of the best master plans I've seen in a long time. And in that master plan, there is a section on transportation, quite a few pages about transportation. And Greg Callog, the Director of County Transportation Department, has done a fantastic job in growing and expanding public transportation in our community. But as you can see in Eric's situation, we can get him there, but we can't bring him home. And he needs a special bus, and only LETS has that kind of a service. So I'm hoping and I'm praying that this year, this commission, a board, will take a closer look at public transportation in the county, take a look at the master plan that is so beautifully written, and also the Transportation Department has a five-year master plan too. So it'd be interesting to compare the two. And I must thank the board. You have been working on expanding public transportation. I understand that the ridership is up and the demand is great. Now, even though 85% of the people in our county have automobiles and drive to work or doctors. Now, even though 85% of the people in our county have automobiles and drive to work or doctor's appointment or whatever it might be, but I am approaching an age, and this is a personal admission right now, I'm approaching an age where my car keys will be taken away. I'm 83 years old, and before those keys get taken away, please expand public transportation because I've been using it a lot. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service and all you do for the county. Thank you.
Tim Quinn, Genoa Township, followed by Stephanie Nicholas.
Good evening. My name is Tim Quinn, and wife and I have lived in Genoa Township for the past 27 years. And it's, I know that you guys and all of you don't get many compliments. Probably I criticized a little too much, but we are thankful, extremely thankful for what you've been doing. We appreciate it. And by following the concepts and facts found in the doctrines of the lesser magistrate, you've shown that bullying is not going to work. The people in Lansing have been bullying communities for quite a while now, and we're very proud of you for standing up, taking care of the people, taking care of your constituents. And the message is being heard loud and clear, not just here locally, but I think around the country. People appreciate, appreciate what you're doing, and you need to be, you need to be thanked for that. And that's, I guess, all I have to say, unless you'd like me to stay up here longer. You guys are doing a good job, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Don't be a stranger.
Stephanie Nicholas from Howell, followed by Lisa Rosmanowicz. Sorry, Lisa. I tried.
Hi, I'm sure you're all getting used to me by now. Just want to start off by saying I fully support the getting the ARPA funds for LETS, as I was a home health aide for roughly four years and had many clients, many of them disadvantaged through no fault of their own. I would sometimes be on the bus with them because they had to cover so many stops, like, you know, way past 6 o'clock, 7, 8, and some of them, you know, they just need to go to a medical appointment. You know, if there was just a regular run of buses, they could get to where they're going. You see the increase in pedestrian, bike, motorcycle accidents. A lot of people choose to ride a motorcycle because, hey, they're saving gas money. You know, you're going to cut down on a lot of traffic incidents if you decide to actually serve the people that live in your county rather than people from out of county that are lobbyists for the NRA. And you do quite a bit of listening to those people, and I'd like to share my experience on Monday when, well, after I got done speaking, you know, I had, you know, I listened. I had to use restroom, and I was approached by a reporter, and I said, sure, I would like to expand upon my, you know, I'd like to, she asked me if I'd like to share because there were so few in the room from this county and with a differing opinion than your lobbyist, NRA lobbyist. So here's what happened. I was down by the elevator, you know, finally, you know, got a moment to speak freely. Somehow, your wonderful, well-regulated militia found out I'm talking to a reporter, right? Okay. So I'm followed down, you know, not by one, two people, a lot of people, armed, angry NRA people. I'm not exaggerating. Look at your videotape. I hope, I mean, I'm not going on public record here to say my rights were violated. I was threatened and intimidated by a group of armed people, and I encourage you to look at that video when I spoke to Channel 7 News of your wonderful people, some of your GOP people, you know, brainwashed cult members who I have no idea how they got there. Some of them nearly were, you know, are felons, but they get their charges reduced to misdemeanors, yet they qualify for these wonderful awards. And watch out for some of these people going, trying to get into the Reaching Higher program too, because a lot of them are anti-rainbow flag. They hate diversity, and I'm not exaggerating. It's on record. A lot of these GOP people, this new, you know, party, so that's all I've got to say. I'm not going to go further on that, but I've, it's researched well. So I would like you to really work on, you know, maybe welcoming opposing viewpoints in a safe way, not being harassed, intimidated. There is also a gentleman with the press, when I had to get up and do my card, and other people had to get up and leave their seats. So he was there with his tripod, kind of blocking the aisle, and I guess, and very labored look when he had to get up and, you know, and I felt bad, but I had to fill out a card, right? Last aisle there, okay. I don't know how, but he had a miraculous recovery. He was standing there two weeks ago. You know, I'd be willing to go into detail if anyone is concerned, and of course, I shared with you the concerning video downtown Howell of the MCC and frickin' media that are well-known to the police. But I didn't think hate speech was protected, and that was what was in that video. They were causing local businesses to lose customers during your Trump rally. And it was very disturbing, and I've shared it with restaurant owners too, so they can, you know, maybe they don't have a criminal, but they might have a good civil lawsuit for losing customers due to harassment and intimidation, which, you know, you all are aware, because I emailed all seven of your nine of you the video. So I think it's worth sharing and going on public record. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The last card I have here in the board chambers is from Lisa with Hamburg Township.
Hello, everyone. Since everyone's telling how long they've lived in the county, I've been in the county for 54 years. And no, I wasn't born here. So, but I just wanted to also thank you for your leadership and for the things that you're doing for our county. I stay in this county. I've been here for a long time. I've owned seven homes in this county, and I'm not leaving. So I really appreciate what you do. Reaching Higher sounds like an awesome program, and I would be fully supportive of funds going to them. I would love to see something added for teaching the Constitution, information about the founding of this country. A majority of students now believe that hate speech, which is not defined under U.S. law and thus is subjectively conceived, does not deserve First Amendment protection. And should we be surprised by that? Almost certainly not. There's no reason we should expect college students or even high school students to be able to make sound constitutional arguments when they don't even know the content of the First Amendment. For more than a third of Americans can't name a single right guaranteed under it. In fact, I just heard recently that most of our representatives in D.C. don't even know our three branches of government. That's kind of scary. You have to be living under a rock not to see that our social fabric is unraveling, that even basic civil discourse is becoming increasingly rare. There are a lot of explanations for why. Higher education, in particular, has come under fire with childish campus behavior ranging from therapy sessions with Play-Doh, puppies, coloring books, to safe spaces, to vandalism as specific bugaboos. But I would like to just, you know, the, I feel like this country is under attack from so many different places. You know, it's this substitution population that I think is being propagated by the globalists in terms of, you know, wanting people coming into this country that don't know anything about America, don't know anything about our founding, don't know anything about our constitution, and I think it's, I think it's for a reason. And I'm really happy, and I would really love, I love the Alcoa, hello, the correspondence, the resolution that they sent you. I love that about education and getting this information back to our, into our students, into their learning, because it's really going to make for a better world in this, and country as well as world. So I just would like to support that if you guys ever consider bringing that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have someone on Zoom?
We have Lori Cowan on Zoom.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lori Cowan, Villa Township. In the last week alone, we've had over 11 more mass shootings in the United States. And I'm just wondering, what will it actually take for this Board of Commissioners to decide that protecting life is more important than a gun? Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any more, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Do we clear the? So the next thing on the, on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 24, 2023. So moved. Been moved, supported. Are there any comments or questions, any additions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Resolution passes. Item 10 is tabled items from previous meetings. I don't believe there are any. 11 is next, and it's report. So any of our commissioners have a report they'd like to make this evening? Yes, sir. Jay Gross, Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two reports this evening. The first one is very pleasant. The second one is less so, unfortunately. I was pleased to attend the Howell Farmer's Market yesterday morning on State Street adjacent to the courthouse. And it was a wonderful turnout of residents, families, and there was just a ton of goodies available. And while I was there, it was very obvious that folks were enjoying that farmer's market. My wife and I enjoyed it as well. And so if some of you have not yet been to a farmer's market, there was one in Brighton on Saturdays, but Howell is on Sunday, and it's a worthwhile experience. I would recommend it highly. The second report is rather personal as well. Two weeks ago, we had a meeting in which we considered a resolution regarding Second Amendment rights. And during the course of the discussion and conversation on that amendment, I brought to my colleagues' attention that I had received a communicate from somebody who indicated that gun violence was the leading cause of death among children. And I disagreed with that. And I disagreed with that because I know for a fact that abortion kills more children than guns. It may not be too widely realized, but since 1973, when Roe versus Wade was adopted by the Supreme Court, over 60 million babies have died. At times, it's well over a million a year. And I bring this up because a couple of days after that meeting, a friend of mine brought to my attention that an article appeared online from WHMI. And in his opinion, he's not an attorney, but he is close to the law for various reasons, that I was defamed, that I was not quoted correctly. And he called the manager of WHMI and complained, and they subsequently changed the comments. I stand by my remarks regarding abortion-killin' children. And if somebody wants to take issue with the number of a million or more a year, I can refer them to the public records of Planned Parenthood in their annual filings that they have committed over 300,000 abortions every year. And they get a half a billion dollars of our tax dollars to do it. And there are many corporations in this country that support them with donations. And I don't have the list with me, but I know that Kroger's on there. I know that Home Depot is on there. Some people say we should boycott those businesses. That's an individual choice. But I stand here, I sit here, I correct myself, to tell you that I am very much in support of the right to life, especially from the moment of conception until natural death, and I will stand by that for the rest of my life. It's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much, Mr. Jay Gross. Are there any other comments? And by the way, 60 million seems like a pretty, I mean, how do you wrap your arms around a number like that? It doesn't mean anything to most people. Except that's about the population of the country of Italy. 60 million people over there. So in those terms, it's a little easier to understand, and so I thought I would share that with you. Are there any other reports? Jay, you shut them all off. It was well done. Yep. We're going to move to item 12, Resolutions for Consideration. First, Resolution 202304077 is a resolution authorizing the tax, the county treasurer to establish 2022 Delinquent Tax Fund. Chair will enter into motion. So moved, Rick. So moved, moved and supported. Are there any comments? Madam Treasurer, would you like to say a few things about the delinquent tax fund? That you're looking after that, I'm assuming. It's, you have it under the mattress? Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Just for you to comment on, there's been a hearing at the Supreme Court dealing with property taxes and foreclosure, that sort of thing, and who gets the money, whose money it is, is it, and can you comment? Is there any more to say before the ruling comes out?
Not yet. So we're waiting for the final ruling to come out. There was a federal court of appeals case. And the question at hand is whether tax foreclosure is an unconstitutional taking at the point that it is foreclosed. Now, if you're familiar with the Raffelli case, that debate was whether or not there was an unconstitutional taking at the time of the sale, and that former interest holders had a right to surplus funds from that sale. So this newer case, again, is yet a different argument, that the unconstitutional taking happens at the point that it is foreclosed. You know, no one has a crystal ball. The legal team that is working with the county treasurers across the state of Michigan is saying to expect a final ruling sometime mid-June. And that's all I know.
Any other comments? Commissioner Nagy-Giri.
What is the ability, and actually, the gentleman spoke to the issue of civil asset forfeiture, which is a little bit not exactly the same as this, but I put it in the same category where it's questionable that government is doing the right thing when it's, you know, taking, when it's taking someone's property because they didn't pay the property tax. I don't think, I don't have any issue with that. It's when we, the property is sold and I say government makes a profit on the, on the, on the proceeds. What are the implications if, you know, I mean, do we as a county have the ability to say we're not going to do that anymore? That the excess proceeds with, we can, can we unilaterally decide to turn them over?
Well, the excess proceeds, following the Raffelli case, then new legislation was passed. And so the surplus, now any former interest holders have a right to stake a claim to those proceeds. And then it goes through the judicial process of, the judge will determine, because there may be multiple interest holders in a property. So who gets what percentage of the property? So who gets what percentage of the proceeds? So there is now a mechanism in place where former interest holders have a right to claim the surplus. Now, if there are no claimants, then that surplus resides with the foreclosing governmental unit. In Livingston's case, that FGU is the state of Michigan. So we are not receiving surplus proceeds. We strictly receive the tax dollars, interest penalties that were due to us as part of the foreclosed tax amount. So in that regard, we are unique. We're one of only six counties where the state of Michigan is the FGU. Does that help?
Yes, it does. No, I think that's a great thing, that we're not participating as a, as a governmental unit in, in that situation. Thank you.
Anyone else? No other comments? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You're on your way. Thank you very much. The next resolution, twenty-two-three-zero-four-zero-seven-eight is a resolution approving appointments to the Livingston County Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. Moved. Sir, support?
Support, Rick.
Moved and supported. Are there any comments or amendments that Commissioner Jay, Rick? Jay Gross. Why didn't you change your name?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to offer an amendment to this resolution for the purpose of adding Mr. Jay Bibby back on the list that had been recommended to the Personnel Committee. He was deleted from the list last week. And I think there are some compelling reasons to be able to put him back on. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution.
So motion made to amend, is there support? I'll support it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
I, I feel it would be appropriate to add Mr. Bibby back to the list of members of the County Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. Mr. Bibby has been on that committee for at least five or six years. He brings to that group a wealth of experience in park development and park management, which is something that we in Livingston County need. We have two wonderful parks that have come to us through donations, bequeaths of, of property. And our, our Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee is struggling mightily to develop those parks for, for the use of all of our residents. And they are doing that with no budget, no funds. They are literally begging, borrowing, and stealing to, to be able to make improvements to the property out there for a variety of uses by our citizens. As it happens, Mr. Bibby is one of the prime movers and shakers, if you will, to bring mountain bike, a mountain bike trail to Lutz Park. And which there appears to be quite a bit of interest in establishing. As I mentioned a few moments ago, the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee has no budget. They are under the auspices of our Planning Department, and the Planning Department has no budget for parks. The members are all volunteers. They don't even get reimbursed for mileage as other committee members do. So I, I feel it would be appropriate for Mr. Bibby to be back in, on that committee to be able to continue his fine service on behalf of Livingston County. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I would support that, too. Commissioner Gross, I, I, I sit on this committee. And when you're in the, the passion that everybody has for working the parks, I never knew that he didn't live in Livingston County until you actually get into it. He, he's been on, I think, about seven years now. And he brings a lot of great experience and value and excitement to parks that are not paid by tax, tax dollars. So, you know, I, I'm in support of that as well. We are looking as a, as a Board of Commissioners, other ways to help fund the parks and, and, and improve them. One of them's the Never Forget Run on the sixteenth of September that I worked on with the Parks and Rec Committee and on behalf of the board and with Veteran Services. So everybody needs, needs to know that. There's a lot of work going on and no tax dollars going to it. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any comments?
I have sat on this board also. This board is, so far as I can tell, apolitical. And for that reason, I, I think other boards, I might feel differently. I'm sure I would feel differently and have voted differently. But I think that, although that's something, if somebody on this board is being political, I think that'd be a reason to not include them, whether it's on one team that we like or on a team that we don't like. So I think this should be, I, I think he should be left on, on, on the list. As far as the funding of the parks, our facilities manager, our facilities team does have part in their budget of mowing and keeping maintenance and things like that. So the county is putting some, some money in, in to the upkeep and that sort of thing. So we're not, but the, the, this park committee also understands the general feeling of the board of, of being very fiscally responsible. And, and they, they have accepted in the past that this board historically has not seen fit to fund the parks with their own budget. So, so I, you know, I, I, I see no harm in putting him back on. If I did, I would not vote for him.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the Personnel Committee, excuse me, Personnel Committee meeting, I motioned to remove his name for the reason that he doesn't live in the county, which I still stand by my recommendation to my colleagues. The, the gentleman, I, you know, my understanding from what my colleagues have shared is he's technically competent and serves in that capacity. But, you know, there, he, he does live in Ann Arbor, a community that, in my view, cannot be any more different than Livingston County in terms of the worldview and what the proper role of government is and spending and the whole nine yards. And that perspective is, is troubling to me. If we had an expert on some committee that lived in Ohio or another state, I, I don't think we would be looking to put that person on a committee that represents the values and the views of Livingston County. So I just wanted to share my point of view, and thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Certainly. Anyone else? Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, if there's no other commissioners, I'd like to have a second comment.
Yes, you can have it.
I would like to point out that Livingston County does not have a residency requirement anyplace. I know that Ann Arbor does. And the truth be told, we have a significant number of county employees who live outside of the county, and they show up for work every day. Fact of the matter is, we have one employee who lives in Florida and another one who lives in Kentucky. And they do their job via remote satisfactorily. So given that there is no residency requirement anyplace, I, I fail to see how we can block this gentleman. And it also begs the question, what are we doing with respect to Mr. Bob West from Heartland? It's my understanding that he lives in Canada. He also has a residence in Heartland, and I have no idea how he shares his time. But I've got it on good report that he lives in Canada, Toronto, Canada. So it seems to me we're mixing apples and oranges here. Basic fact is, there is no resident requirement. And on that basis, I think Mr. Bibby is entitled to be added to the committee. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. May I, Commissioner Gross? Yes, you may.
Do you have a statistic as to how much mountain bike paths would cost to put on into the?
Commissioner, can you please speak into the microphone? We can hardly hear you on Zoom.
Do you have a cost estimate for what my mountain bike paths would cost us to put in the park?
I do not. I am no longer a member of that committee.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of how much mountain bike paths would make if we had them in? Would, would they be a money-making?
Once again, I'm not privileged to that. I'm no longer a member of the committee.
Okay. Roger and I are in that committee. Maybe we can, I, I think that this, there, there is no money in Livingston County to go towards that. And so the Mountain Biking Association itself has an interest in having places for their members to ride. And so they are the ones that are doing the most of the work. Now, our Facility Services would do, you know, mowing of around the trail and things of that. And it's just normal sort of things. But it's my understanding that, that the county will neither spend money or make money on this. I don't think, I'm not sure if, if this mountain biking, if it's, I, I got the picture, it's completely open to the public. There's not, somebody gonna be standing at the gate taking money, so to speak. So I think it's more of a passive.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let me just make one comment, and then we'll, if there are no other comments, we'll, we'll take a vote. I was one of the first people that sat on that committee. And the, our first project was to find a place to put the dog park. Or the dog, the, the dog park. And, yeah, and, and we wound up putting it right in town. I mean, in, in our East Complex. And none of us, not, nobody, nobody was ever reimbursed for their time or their travel. But they were all turned on by being able to do a good thing. Now, a good thing for the dogs, of course, was a good thing for everybody as far as we were concerned. And it's an outstanding contribution to the community. And I think that, that committee just does great things for almost nothing. I mean, where do you get something in government that you could say does that? All right, if there are no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. This is for the, this is for the amendment. This is for the amendment. All those in favor of approving the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye. How many was that? Four?
Yes, for the nays.
One, two, three, four? Four to seven. All right, so we approve the amendment.
I'll, I'll just request a roll call vote, please.
Sure.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample is absent. Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
Commissioner Drake?
No.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani?
No.
Motion carries.
So we approve the amendment? Now.
The motion to amend carried, correct.
So those, all those in favor of the, an approved amendment or the amended resolution signify by saying aye? Or would you like a roll call vote on that, too?
Roll call vote, please.
I would like to make a few more comments if I could.
Sure.
The, it may have started with a dog park, but the, the county received a donation from the Lutz family. And they had a farm up on Kahakta Road. I think that's, it's way north in Livingston County. And, and this Parks Committee was the one that was the committee that handled that, along with Kathleen Klein Hudson and Facility Services. Then several years later, another, the Fillmore family, Mr. Fillmore wanted to donate property, and he donated land with certain strings attached to it with both of these, which are somewhat complicating to the Parks program. But so, and that's over on Kellogg Road over in, I think, Shuinoa Township. And so that's how we got into this, and we've got some grants and things like that. But it's been a slow process, but a good process, I think. And so that's the background, not of these people, but, because, well, most of these people were involved in the development of those, the receiving and the development of those properties.
Ben, where do we stand on this now?
Are you ready for a roll call vote on resolution as amended?
If somebody else has any other comments to make? Yes, we are.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample is absent. Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Resolution two-zero-two-three-dash-oh-four-dash-oh-seventy-nine. This is going to be a roll call vote, a resolution authorizing the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funding for six senior citizens centers in Livingston County.
So moved, Gross.
Support, Deaton? Moved and supported. Anybody have any comments? All those in favor signify by saying, I'm sorry, it's a roll.
Yes, this is a roll call required. Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample is absent. Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. And Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Somebody is gonna clap sooner or later for something.
I, I, I accuse them of all being cheerleaders, so maybe they've got a cheer for us or something.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. We're not through yet. You have to sit through the whole thing, you know? The next, the next Resolution, twenty-two-three-oh-four-dash-zero-eight-zero is a resolution sharing Veteran Services Department enhancements with other Michigan counties.
So moved, Helserman?
Support, Gross.
Been moved and supported. Are there any comments, Commissioner Nakagiri? Would you like to say a few words on this? I know you were behind this.
Yeah, I appreciated the support at, at the committee meeting. This is really something that, the only reason why it's coming in front of the board is because we are, we need to, as a board, vote to release a confidential attorney-client privileged document as was discussed in committee. There's no issues with doing that. You know, and I also mentioned in committee, just for, you know, future reference, if we in the future have a situation where we vote to release a privileged document, then whatever the subject is, you know, we basically give up the privilege for, for all, if there were other privileged documents according to our legal counsel. In this particular case, there is no, this is a one and done. You know, it was a legal. our legal counsel. In this particular case, there is no, this is a one and done. You know, there was a legal opinion on interpreting the property tax exemption for disabled veterans. So anyway, I believe this, sharing this information with all counties gives them not only, you know, greater insight on the legal interpretation of this property tax exemption, but also we pass along how to acquire the list of recently discharged veterans, so each county can know who, which veterans are, have moved into their area. Therefore, their veterans departments can reach out to them and make sure that they're made aware of all of the benefits that they've earned as protectors of, of our great country. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Have any comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, early on, I, I supported this. I talked to Commissioner Nakagiri on it, and I think that the people in the audience and our constituents and the people in Livingston County can see that this board gets into the details of a lot of stuff, and I'm finding out that other counties do not. So by us doing this, I believe it's going to help out veterans in, in other counties. And hopefully this board can do this on other subjects as well. So thank you.
Very good point. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Gross?
Thank you. The resolution indicates that this resolution should be circulated to all Michigan counties. I would like to add, I don't think an amendment is necessary, but I would be hopeful that we would send it to the Michigan Association of Counties as well.
Certainly.
For them to publicize it.
We'll do that with a letter of recommendation. How does that sound?
Works.
Okay. Anybody else? And in which case we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Item thirteen on the agenda is the accounts payable reports for claims dated May eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the payables dated fifteenth of April through twenty-eight of April. Chair will entertain a motion to accept those and approve those claims. I think.
Motion, motion to approve, or motion, motion to approve the claims and payables.
Okay, thank you. Moved and supported?
Support.
There you go. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the call to the public. It'll be the last call to the public this evening. We have.
Chuck Wright, Handy Township.
Good evening, Chuck.
You just approved the claims and payables? I have no idea what those are.
Oh.
So I would like to ask that, that information gets included with the board packet that goes on the website that has the rest of the agenda. I think it could be interesting to keep an eye on that.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
That's the only card I have.
I do not, we do not have anybody on Zoom either, Commissioner.
I'm sorry?
We do not have anybody on Zoom for call the public.
Well, then we won't listen to them. Next, we'll move to a closed session. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session. This is a roll call vote.
Motion to move into closed session?
Second.
Is this a roll call vote?
Mr. Chair, I apologize for the interruption. Could we just cite to the basis that's on the agenda here?
Oh.
To discuss a written legal opinion?
Yes.
You're moving to closed session to discuss a legal written opinion moved by Fiani?
Support Gross.
Been moved and supported? Any, any thoughts? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
We got to do a roll.
It is a roll. Doesn't say that here, does it?
It's a required roll call vote.
Okay.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample is absent. Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Motion carries.
All right, if you'll all please leave the room. And Chuck, if you'd like to come up and drop a note at the, our desk so that we know how to get a hold of you on that issue. That be all right? Oh, you'll be going back. There you go. Yes, sir.
We have copies of the bills and payables in our office area. I think you can be free to look at it.